I'd like to call the Monday, May 1st, 2023 Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at this time, and we'll start this morning with the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, followed by our Assistant County Manager, Sherri Slater, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much and good morning Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, this month we celebrate the contributions and achievements of older Americans. Thank you for the decades of experience and years of life they have shared with us, for they have served as role models for future generations. Encourage them to stay engaged, active, and involved in their own lives and our community. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach with us this morning. Appreciate you coming in today, leaving the beautiful beach to come into town for us. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. At this time, I'd ask for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. So move.
Take it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. The agenda has been adopted. Have any Board members with questions or concerns about any item on the consent agenda? If not, we ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion and a second.
Take it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. Motion passes. Ms. Griffin, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This morning for public comment, we do have one citizen who has signed up to speak today. I would remind the public that you have exactly five minutes when you're called up for public comment, and we ask that you stick to that five minutes and take your seat at the close. Please address your comments to the Board as a whole and not any one Commissioner. Please do not have conversations with anyone in the audience or try to defer any of your time. At this time, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Ivan Irving, 1097 Heinstown Road. And if you would, repeat your name and your address when you come to the microphone.
Top of the morning, ladies and gentlemen, Board members. My name is Ivan Irving. I live at 1097 Heinstown Road here in Jacksonville, North Carolina. And my concern today is for the improvement of our roads. It needs to be widened and marked because it's unpaved. They came up and they stopped for some reason we don't know, and we still lack fire hydrants in the area. So that's our issue for today, and I hope that you can put it in your budget so we can get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that includes our public comment period.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations or proclamations this morning. Ms. Griffin?
We certainly do. We actually have two proclamations this morning, and I'm going to read the first one into the record. It is for Foster Care Month. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Foster Care Month, May 2023. Whereas the theme of National Foster Care Month is Strengthening Minds, Uplifting Families, which speaks to the need to focus on the mental well-being of children and youth in foster care as diligently as we focus on the physical health and safety. And whereas we recognize we must take a holistic and culturally responsive approach to supporting the mental health needs of children and youth in foster care and their caregivers. And whereas maintaining relationships with relatives and kin can increase stability, reduce trauma, and help children maintain a sense of family, belonging, and identity. And whereas stable nurturing placements have positive impacts on the resilience and long-term well-being of children and youth. And whereas effective training and support for foster parents improves retention, increases placement stability, and increases capacity to help children and youth in care navigate life's challenges. And whereas we take time to renew our commitment to ensuring a bright future for children and youth in foster care and acknowledge foster parents, family members, fictive kin, mentors, and child welfare professionals who make a meaningful difference in their lives. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledge May 2023 as Foster Care Month, presented the first day of May 2023 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Our representatives from the Onslow County Department of Social Services are going to accept the proclamation, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Walter Scott present the proclamation.
I'm extremely proud to be standing here today. Onslow County currently has 55 foster care parents. We have a class that is in session now and will graduate at the end of May. In July, we are going to be recruiting more foster parents. This team, when I've become a Commissioner, they said that they have a goal of 100 foster parents. We have 55. We are in need of more support and help. But not only that, I want to thank you and your staff for what you have done and what you're going to be doing in the future, because this is one area that we cannot get behind in. And I thank you for everything you're doing. I understand we have some foster parents with us today. I want to thank you on behalf of the Commissioners for stepping up, because this is a great need, and thank you.
Any comments?
Thank you Commissioners for recognizing May as Foster Care Month. I would like to introduce John Heinzman. He is our Foster Care Licensing Supervisor, and then we'll allow the Waltons to speak for foster parents.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming. As was previously said, yes, we do have 55 foster families, and we are actively recruiting more families. The foster families we have do an incredible job providing safety for the children, working with the families to unify those children with their families, as well as allow the children to stay in Onslow County. Unfortunately, there are times that kids end up, once they come into care, they end up going an hour away, hour and a half away, which really adds more trauma for the children and for the families. So again, the need for foster families here in Onslow County is huge. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce the Waltons, who are foster families for Onslow County, and they do an incredible job for us and the families.
Commissioners, everyone, I appreciate you coming out. As was already described, there's a large need for foster care in Onslow County. Some of the figures my wife and I have found is that Onslow County has the second highest need for foster families in the United States. That was unbeknownst to us. We've moved around the states. We've been involved in several foster programs in different states, and Onslow County is doing it well. The workers here make our job as foster parents easier. It is not the easiest job, but it's definitely rewarding. And anybody who has an interest, I would encourage you to look into it. But thank you. I appreciate your time. And if you know anybody interested in foster care, there's always a need, especially here in Onslow County.
Thank you so much. Our second proclamation is an observance of Older Americans Month, and I will also read this proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Older Americans Month 2023. Whereas Onslow County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Onslow County recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and support that older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas Onslow County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby acknowledge May 2023 as Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging, presented the first day of May 2023. And we have representatives from Onslow County Senior Services here to accept the proclamation. The Chairman has requested that Commissioner Buchanan present the proclamation.
Honored privilege to meet and give this proclamation.
Being one of those senior citizens myself, along with a lot of other people in the audience, we do a lot for our senior citizens. One of the things we're doing right now is we're moving them out of the senior citizens where they're located, and we're building, we're going to add on to that, renovate that building, and we're moving them down the road on 258, I believe it is, where they'll be housed.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, thank you for this proclamation and recognizing Older Americans Month for the month of May. As we know, seniors and older Americans contribute a lot, not only Onslow County, but the United States. And we at the senior center want to recognize them, especially during the month of May. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Shelley Ashley, and she's going to go over a little bit about the events that we have specifically for this month. Michelle?
Thank you. Being Older Americans Month, the seniors look forward to different activities and events that we have going on. So with it being Older Americans Month, we try to look at educational topics to bring to them. Some of them are, you know, they don't want to think about, and some of them that we have to, you know, get them to understand a little more. But, you know, like they said, the seniors, you know, have kind of control of the community, you know, and what they want to do. So it's always a choice. So I have my Older Americans Month calendar here, and you can see it's full. But then again, they have choices. So we do fun things, anywhere from musical chairs, to we have the Willy Wonka movie going on, all the way to we have the Division of the Blind coming to speak. We have identity theft coming up. We just had a huge shred event. You know, to get them to understand, you know, things are changing. They can't just keep, you know, documents at home. So we are working with the seniors, you know, throughout the whole month. And so if anybody has any questions, they come to our staff, and, you know, we help them with individual issues, as well as bringing it, you know, to a whole where they don't want to speak on their, you know, on their own. They'd rather speak with a group. So I do thank you for recognizing Older Americans Month.
Thank you. Now we are moving to our county department spotlight. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you Chairman Foster. We have two fantastic departments today that are going to give us a spotlight. Our first one is one that's near and dear to all of us who don't like mosquitoes. We felt like this would be a great time of year to invite our Environmental Services Technician Jeremy Butler, who is going to tell us all a little bit about what Environmental Services does for our community.
Good morning. Bear with me, because, yeah, I'm nervous. My name's Jeremy Butler. I've been with Onslow County for roughly about 21 years. I get asked this a lot, what exactly is Environmental Services? And I pretty much tell them we are mosquito control. I mean, that's my heart, my passion. I pretty much have ran it for the last probably four or five years, while the other two or three guys did other county needs. But exactly how we operate, if you do have a mosquito problem, first things first is you need to give us a call. Call the office. We will take your information down. We need your name, your address, phone number. Then we'll conduct a site visit. And what that is, is us just going out there. If you've got mosquitoes, why do you have mosquitoes? And if we can find things as containers or something we can larvicide, let's get rid of the source. Get rid of the source, we can get rid of the mosquitoes, hopefully. Another thing that we do is larvicide. We have areas around the county that we know breed mosquitoes. So we'll visit those areas quite a bit and just check them once in a while. If you do feel like you have a mosquito or mosquito habitat at your house, let us know. We'll check it out. We also do barrier treatments. We do those mainly for outdoor events such as weddings, birthday parties, and stuff like that. We cannot barrier spray the whole county due to staffing. There's only three of us, so we're doing the best we can. We also do ULV trapping. That is mosquito surveillance. We, once a week, we'll go out there. We'll set a trap at five permanent locations. We'll set a trap on Monday, retrieve it on Tuesday. On Thursday and Fridays, we actually will count those mosquitoes to see exactly what we have in the county. Those numbers get put into a data system that the state will look at. That helps us get funding for hurricanes if we, if there is another devastating one that we have. Another thing that we do, a lot of people don't know about, we actually do aquatic weed spraying. We'll go on New River, Southwest Creek, Northeast Creek, and we look for alligator weed, as well as parrot feather. Alligator weed is an invasive species of plant that if it's not taken care of, it'd actually go from one side of the river all the way to the other. Makes it impassable. Another fun thing that we love to do is beaver management. We have a huge issue with beavers in Onslow County, and us being so flat, it doesn't take much for a pesky little beaver to build a one- to two-foot dam, and now we're having a lot of flooding issues. We do have a dedicated trapper. He usually traps mainly from October to the end of April. He's really good. I have to give it to him. He's probably one of the best ones that I've known, and I, like I said, I've been here for a while. But typical happens, if you've got a beaver issue, you think you got one, give us a call. We'll go out there. We'll check it out. If it's the first time we've been out there, it's possible he can catch up to 20 beaver. The following years, I mean, you're not going to get rid of them. They're going to keep coming back. So the following year, you're looking maybe one to two beavers, and then we can get in and get out pretty quick. We do remove the dams, usually by hand with rakes, and sometimes we can get a mini excavator to them. We'll take care of it that way as well. And lastly, what we do, we haven't done much lately, is stream debris removal. When I first started, there were seven people in the department. There was five of us dedicated to stream debris removal. We work year-round, just cleaning out New River and other creeks in Onslow County. Now we're down to three. We do contract a lot of the work out now. We, through tourism, we try to take care of New River as well as the Whiteck River. And we have been working diligently with Soil and Water, with getting grants to take care of some of the other creeks in Onslow County, and we're doing pretty good with it. I know I was asked to speak five minutes, and I talk pretty fast. So if anybody has any questions, I'm here. You can call the office. You can email me. I'll be gladly to do what I can.
You did a great job. This is his first time ever speaking in front of the Board of Commissioners. He did an amazing job. So thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
And of course, mosquito control is a matter of public health, too. There's a lot of disease that spreads, so that's one reason why the county's involved in that. And the stream management that this team does along with Soil and Water really helps us when it comes to flooding during major weather events. Our second county department spotlight today is with solid waste, which is another really important aspect of what we offer to our community. We all need a place to take our trash, and at this time, actually, we're running out of capacity at the Onslow County Solid Waste Facility and are going to have to be doing an expansion. We have our Solid Waste Director, Tim Oxt, who's going to speak to us today.
Good morning Chairman Foster and Vice Chairman Knapp and Commissioners. I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about Onslow County Solid Waste and the services that we provide to our community. We operate a Subtitle D landfill at 415 Meadowview Road and five convenience sites throughout the county. This is to help with our ever-growing population that we have now. We have 22 amazing employees that work very diligently each day to ensure that our facility not only looks good, but it also gives every visiting citizen a great experience. At our facility, we process about 11,846 tons of municipal solid waste each month. We also recycle around 1,552 tons per month with our partners at Sunoco. We are still processing thousands of tires each month with our shredder and utilizing that product for new innovative ways to save airspace at our facility. We've just broken ground on our 11-acre Phase 5 expansion, which is the first of several phases that will provide approximately 25 years of life to the landfill. Our staff is currently working on many upgrades at our convenience sites as well, with the whole site improvement at Midway Park that includes new compacting containers, a driveway fencing and lighting. We're in the process of adding fresh stone and new fencing to Ramsey Road Site. The staff is also working to make site improvements at Folkeston, Swansboro, and Verona with updated fencing and new containers. There will be improvements made at the main landfill as well, including a new inbound scale that's coming in August, working on improving our traffic flow and safety at our convenience wall and in the recycling areas. The recycling program is doing great work with the schools and is working to get recycling containers at every school in the county. The Solid Waste Department hosts two Household Hazardous Waste Days each year at the main landfill, with the spring one coming up Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a tremendous success in keeping the harmful items out of the main landfill. This not only helps conserve airspace, but provides a great service to the community. Our staff also performs roadside cleanups, and we are always looking for citizen volunteers for those events. If someone happens to need community service hours, Solid Waste has a program for that as well. It assists us with helping to keep the trash picked up around the landfill, which is a very critical part of our daily operation. The team at Solid Waste is working to move into the future with new technology, innovations, and processes that will help sustain us for many years to come. Thank you for taking this time and listening to me give a little bit about the landfill.
Thank you so much, Tim. We appreciate all the hard work you and the staff are doing out at the landfill. That concludes our departmental spotlight. Chairman Foster?
We have a few public hearings this morning, so if you want to get us started, Ms. Griffin?
We do. We have five this morning. And our first one is regarding a resolution for proposed installment financing. And this is the first step in this, so that we can take it to the LGC. And I'm going to have our Finance Officer, Andrew Prince, do our staff background and introduction.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. The Finance Office, in doing its due diligence for the new bonding related to the elementary school, identified an opportunity for the county to save $1,500, $5,610 over a 10-year period of time. Basically, that's $100,000 a year by refinancing our 2012A bonds related to mostly the governmental center here at this point in time. The total would not exceed 68 million. That is broken down into 44.85 million for the school and 21.4 million for the refinancing. The $1 million in savings to the county is net of the cost of issuance and the underwriter's discount. Today, we respectfully request that the Board consider approving the resolution, which will serve only to allow the county to proceed with an application for approval of the installment financing with the local government commission pursuant to General Statute 16820. If approved, the actual finance documents will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners at an upcoming meeting after probably being notified for the final approval.
Thank you, Andrew. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak for the public hearing for the resolution regarding proposed installment finance agreement. I'll make one call to the audience. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will also ask the Chairman if he would like. I don't think that we ordinarily read this into the record, but I would call the attention of the Commissioners to the resolution and once again explain that this is the step that enables us to go to the local government commission. The local government commission always reviews any financing by any local government in the state of North Carolina, and they would review all of the financial information and decide if we can proceed. And then that contract, that financing agreement, will be brought before the Board again for approval. So today, the ask is simply that the Board of Commissioners approve the resolution, making findings associated with the finance project, and permit an application for approval from the LGC, and to authorize both the Chairman and the Clerk, because the Clerk to the Board actually signs the resolution on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Are the bond costs related to the prime interest rate?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. Well, not directly, but it's related, of course, to how much return they're going to get on those bonds.
Okay, so the quicker the better, right?
Yes.
Outstanding. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public hearing regards a proposed rezoning, PREZ-2023-0004, the Paget rezoning. And I would like to introduce Assistant County Manager Ben Warren for the staff introduction.
Good morning Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this morning, we have an application that was submitted by Gray Outdoor LLC to rezone property from community business conditional zoning to highway business. The property owners are Michael and Sheila Paget, and it's identified as parcel number 18-19, located at 911 Beulahville Highway, and consists of approximately 2.31 acres. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was rezoned from RA to community business conditional zoning several years ago. A site plan was submitted with that application for a convenience store and gas station, and so now the request is to rezone that to a straight highway business classification. The property is currently vacant. It does have access to both a four-inch and six-inch underwater lines, and will be served by individual septic. It's within the Northwest Onslow Fire District, and the closest highway having an average annual daily traffic count is Beulahville Highway, which has a carrying- is Beulahville Highway, which has a carrying capacity of 67,900, and current traffic is 10,500 trips per day. Just looking at the property here at that corner of Steam Shovel Road and Beulahville Highway, as I said, it's currently vacant. Looking at the surrounding zoning, most everything in this area is RA, consisting of agricultural fields and rural residential. As you go to the west, you get to the intersection of Hall Ranch Road and Beulahville Highway. We do have a small commercial property there that's zoned highway business. Comparing the two zoning districts, with this being a conditional zoning district in existence right now, it is limited to the approved conditional use being a gas station and convenience store compared to the requested highway business, which would allow a large-scale of regional scale commercial uses that are typically seen along our major thoroughfares throughout the county. The comprehensive plan, as it's currently written, recommends agriculture and forestry in this area. And as you can see, as you go back towards the Hall Ranch Road where that highway business was, that area is designated as a local commercial activity center. Then it transitions to rural residential and agricultural forestry. And considering the reasonableness of the request, so there's kind of some opposing factors here, considering the existing highway business just down the road from this property, and considering it's located along a major highway, it could be considered reasonable. However, looking at what the land use plan recommends and the existing land use directly adjacent and surrounding this property, being that it recommends agricultural and rural residential, it could be considered unreasonable. At April 6th Planning Board Meeting, the board did review this request and made a unanimous recommendation for approval. There were a couple of citizens that did show up to speak on the rezoning and voiced concerns with increased traffic, as well as safety concerns with the highway use in the middle of a rural residential area. And that concludes the staff report for this rezoning request.
Thank you so much, Ben. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for PREZ-2023-4, the Paget rezoning. We do have one citizen who has signed up to speak, and I would like to welcome Mr. Greg Williamson or Williams from Cedar Point, North Carolina. If you would please repeat your name and your address for us.
Sorry about the scribble. It's Guy Williamson. No, it's no worries. I'm Guy Williamson. I'm with Gray Outdoor LLC, and I'm here representing Pageant Pastor Michael and Sheila Paget, and be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Okay, great. If you'll take a temporary seat on the front row, we will have the commissioners ask you questions as soon as the public hearing concludes. I'll make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak specifically about the Paget rezoning, if you could approach the mic at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will conclude the public hearing at that time and close it, and it's now available for Commissioner consideration.
Have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
Ben, is there anything unusual about this being a highway business in a sea of green right there with all that RA around it? Is that unusual?
It can be, yes, sir. What I would say is that this area of the county has historically been used for agricultural purposes and rural residential. It is along a major thoroughfare, which we've seen begin to transition to more commercial-type uses. Looking at the land use plan, the node just to the west at Hall Ranch Road was designated as a commercial area for future expansion and commercial use. But this is somewhat removed from that area. So right now, looking at existing land uses, it is somewhat unusual.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 6-1. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next rezoning is the Al-Sayed rezoning, PREZ-2023, number 5. And I will also have Assistant County Manager Ben Warren give the staff recommendation.
All right. And I apologize if I pronounce names incorrectly, but this next application is submitted by Tariq Al-Sayed to request a property be rezoned from RA to community business. The property owner is Muda Baruka Fox Incorporated, and it includes parcel 316-51.1, which is located at 3458 Burgal Highway and consists of approximately 0.73 acres. There's an existing commercial structure on the property, and it's served by an unwasseled water line and individual septic. It falls within the Southwest Volunteer Fire District. And looking at the traffic along Burgal Highway, the most recent traffic counts had approximately 5,900 vehicle trips per day, and that roadway has a carrying capacity of 19,200. As you can see, the existing structures on the building, the main building on the right is the commercial building. It looks like the other two were older storage buildings. And just off the property to the right is another, looks like a large metal storage building as well. So this area, again, is completely zoned RA. I'm not sure why this property over time hasn't transitioned to a commercial, being that it has had a commercial use on it for quite some time. Comparing the two districts, the existing RA has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, primarily designed for rural residential and agriculture, with some supporting commercial uses, as opposed to community business with a minimum lot size or no minimum lot size, and really used to accommodate commercial uses that would serve the surrounding community. The comprehensive plan recommends a medium-density residential for this area. And as you can see, this entire area is recommended for medium-density residential. So looking at the reasonableness of the request, it could be considered reasonable due to its location, again, along a major thoroughfare, and also the fact that there's an existing commercial building on the property. It could also be considered unreasonable due to it falling within an area that's primarily dedicated for rural residential and agricultural-type uses. The Planning Board reviewed this request at the April 6th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and there were no citizens to speak on this request. And that does conclude the staff report.
Thank you so much, Ben. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the Al-Sayed rezoning. And no one has signed up to speak, but I will make a call to the audience. Would you, are you the applicant?
Representative applicant, yes.
Come on forward. Yes, sir.
My apologies, I did not sign. Keith Fountain, Representative Tariq. This property located out on Highway 53 has been traditionally commercial property. Probably the ones that have, Harry Michael or know that is Dixon Store, that is located between Southwest and Harris Creek. It's been used for commercial, according to the tax office, since 1948. So it has longstanding use as commercial. The Planning Board Chairman indicated this may have been a result of the new planning, fairly recent planning changes, zoning changes, that this was no longer be allowed for the best use for the property, I would submit. But in looking at the issues that have to be considered, I mean, it's always been traditionally used as a store, and they were not aware that it was not into the proper zoning. The owner of the property, which is the president, is Donnie Walton. He signed a letter, I think it's in your file, that he supports this rezoning. Till after Tariq spent several dollars getting it ready to open, he realized, come to find out, meeting with the county, that it was no longer, it was not allowed to be opened there. This area is tremendously underserved by any type of convenience store. For example, Bear Trail, which Tariq lives. He says the closest place he can go to get a gallon of milk at night is either Scott's Men's Southwest, the Dollar General in Maple Hill, or go back to his other store, used to be known as Davis Variety. So that, there is a tremendous need in this area for additional shopping centers. And the, you know, that neighborhood would be definitely enhanced by the use of it as a shopping center. And this would, I think, be in compliance with overall plan, because it would be convenient for the people in the neighborhood that they would not have services there, that they would not have to drive 5 to 10 miles to receive. So we would ask that the, like, the Planning Board that this be approved. Matter of fact, the Planning Board approved it unanimously, as stated earlier. And I think all the neighbors are excited about possibly a store going in there, from what I've understood. There's been no opposition to it. But if you have any questions, we'll be, Tariq is here, be available to answer anything. And like I say, he does have another store here, to my knowledge, and I've known him for several years. There's never been a minute of problem from his other store that he runs a good operation there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fountain. If you'll just stand by in case there are other questions. I'll make one general call to the audience. If anyone else would like to speak specifically about the Al-Sayed rezoning. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, it is available for Commissioner comment and consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have number four of five. Hang in there. We have the Thompson rezoning, PREZ-2023-6. And Ben Warren will again give the staff background.
All right, thank you. This next one is an application submitted by Donald Thompson II to rezone property from, excuse me, R8M to RA. The property owners are Kathy, Gary, and Thomas Thompson. And this includes two parcels, parcels 765-15.21 and 765-15, located on Thompson Drive and consisting of approximately 13.11 acres. The existing use is residential, and the property is served by a 2-inch unwasseled water line and would be served by individual septic. This is within the Turkey Creek Fire District, and the closest road with an average annual daily traffic count is NC Highway 172, which has an average annual daily traffic count of 18,500 vehicles per day and a carrying capacity of 14,600 trips per day. Looking at the property, the smaller property currently has a residential use on it, larger parcel being currently vacant. And you can see it's right here at the end of Thompson Drive. This gives you a little zoomed-out view so you can see exactly where the property is. But most of the property that's within this neighborhood is R8M. But then to the south and the east, you also have quite a bit of RA zoning in place. In comparing the two districts, the R8M has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, primarily intended to accommodate medium-to-high-density residential, both multifamily and single-family, as well as manufactured housing. Compared to the RA, which has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, maintain, or excuse me, designed to maintain that rural development pattern. And the comprehensive plan currently recommends high-density residential in this area, as you can see from the map here. This is just east of the Four Corners intersection in Sneed's Ferry. So you can see along Highway 172, primarily identified as a community growth activity center. So a lot of commercial development in that area, and then transitioning out into high-density and medium-density residential. Considering the reasonableness of the request, it could be considered reasonable due to the fact that it is adjacent to existing RA zoning compared to the possibility that it could be considered unreasonable because the RA does not align with the comprehensive plan's recommendation for high-density residential in this area. This was heard by the Planning Board at the April 6th meeting. They did make a unanimous recommendation for approval. However, there were several citizens that spoke on the request, and they had concerns with the maintenance of the private road, as well as potential increase in vehicular traffic. One thing I will say about the traffic is that, right now, it's zoned R8M with an 8,000 minimum lot size requirement. And so it is going to a more rural pattern with RA and a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size. So in theory, it should not generate more traffic. As far as the maintenance of the road, that's something that, unfortunately, we can't control. So that concludes the staff report on this rezoning request.
Thank you so much, Ben. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the Thompson rezoning, PREZ-2023-6. And we do have three citizens who have signed up to speak at this public hearing. Our first one, if you could please keep your comments to five minutes, is Jennifer Thompson of 230 Thompson Drive, if you would approach.
We were, I'll sign in. We're married. We were on the way. They didn't even sign.
Okay, do you want to speak? Okay, our second citizen is Mr. Charles Thompson. So come on up. Yes, sir.
I didn't really have nothing to say unless y'all have any questions. It's been in my family for years, all the way, the properties beside it also, beside the 13 acres, or ours, go all the way to Denny's. We have sold a lot over the years, and my family, my dad and granddad have passed away. And so I was always the one building stuff. So I didn't know how to do this. I don't know how to do it. But they let me control this part of it. So I'm just trying to put in, seven campers. Actually, I'm not trying to do the whole thing. They just wanted me to do the, get the whole 13 acres rezoned. So that's what I was going to do. But all I'm doing is that one acre. It was just going to put seven campers on it.
Okay.
And as far as the road, my uncle, I talked to him after the other meeting, because the issue was people didn't, you know, you don't want people driving. It's a private road. But he says for 50 years, we've took care of it. And other people have, you know, that live on it. But he said we have periodically always took care of that and CCC Road, which is the one next to it. And so we're actively doing that, and I would actively do it as my own residence, you know, my own. So that's really all I need to say, unless y'all got anything you want to add.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And if you'll just stay close by in case the commissioners have questions here in just a minute. Our third citizen is Tracy, I believe it's Bettles, of 226 Thompson Drive.
I didn't know to sign, but Mr. Ingram's going to speak to me.
Okay, I'll make, it's okay. I'll make a call to the audience. If you'd like to come on up, Mr. Ingram, give us your name and your address.
My name is Julius Ingram, and I live at 219 Thompson Drive. I don't have a problem with Mr. Thompson building anything at all. I do not. I think if you own a piece of property, you should be able to do something with it. However, I do have some concerns. Concerns being repair of the road once they start the land-clearing operation, because it is a small two-lane road right now. But if log trucks running in and out, it's going to tear it up, to say the least. Historically, I have been the person who has maintained that road such as it is. I bought a tractor and done it by myself at my expense. I had very little help out of anybody else. And that's been since 1979. I've been there. My wife and I have been there since 1979. That's one thing that I'm concerned with, is to keep it a road. If he is not, if there is not stipulations put in to the thing, if this is approved, I foresee that those other people on that road are going to bear a lot of expense they don't need, they shouldn't be doing. It should be on his, at his expense if he's going to have this whatever down there in the woods. Another thing is safety. We have four families that I am aware of who have small children on that driveway. It's a dirt and rock driveway, what it is right now. There's four families with small children. Small children are going to play wherever. They get out there and run Rip and Rare and rode in everywhere else. With this increased traffic possibly, there's a danger, I think. And I'm not trying to rain on his parade at all. I wish him well if that's what he does. But if he does it, I want it done right, and I want somebody to manage that place that he, from what I understand, he said in the meeting over at the zoning office, that he's looking at, or I don't know if he said it in the meeting, but he said it outside anyhow, he is looking at putting a camper space there. Camper spaces are the going thing, it appears. But if he lives in Tennessee, which he does, or his truck says it is, his truck says a Tennessee license plate on it, I don't see where he can. a Tennessee license plate on it, I don't see where he can manage it from Tennessee in Sneed's Ferry. Not very well, anyhow. And that is my concerns. Having managed that place the way it should, do it right if he's gonna be allowed to do it. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, sir. I'll make one more general call if there's any other person who would like to speak on this specific rezoning, the Thompson rezoning. And seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and it's available for Commissioner discussion.
I would like to speak to Ben again. I had a phone call from that family, basically what he just got done saying. He told me the same thing, and my concern would be the gentleman says he's gonna keep it up. What can we do to make sure it stays cap up? I know we don't do roads. I already know that.
No, sir. We're pretty limited in being able to hold someone accountable to maintaining the road, with this being a straight rezoning. There are not conditions that we can replace, that we can place on the zoning, and really not a whole lot of controls or mechanisms in place to be able to control that issue.
So basically, what we're doing is holding him to his honor that he will do that, and I'm a little bit nervous about that.
Ben, is this gonna be done for our, this RV use? Is that what we're doing here?
Commissioner Scott, that's, the owner's indicated that's the case, but this is a straight rezoning, so any use that's allowed in the R A zoning district would have to be considered.
You know, I've really got some concerns, being an advocate camper. I know what goes in and out, the traffic and everything else. I've really got some issues here.
Mr. Warren, can you talk about the difference in the regulations for manufactured home park and a campground? Because those are the, I mean, where it's zoned right now, he could put a campground out, or a mobile home park out there with who knows how many trailers.
Right.
As a campground, what is the difference in the permitting requirements that you guys can do?
So with the, with a manufactured home park, we do have much more rigid requirements as far as paving your internal roads and some other controls compared to an RV park. As far as like a total number of units, you could probably put more units with an RV park than you could a manufactured home park. Also, we do have that standalone manufactured home park ordinance that does allow us to require more stringent upgrades and qualifications within the park itself. That still wouldn't speak to Thompson Drive. It would just address the development within the parcel.
So is there a limit of how many campers they could put in a campground if they permitted a campground out there?
There would be. I don't know that off the top of my head, though.
Okay.
There would be, I mean, some requirements for the campground as far as the upkeep of the property and so forth. Is that correct, or?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So to access the campground, they're gonna have to come down Thompson Drive? Is that the deal? And so?
Yes, sir.
You would think if you wanted these campers to have access to the sites, they're gonna have to be able to get there by going down that road, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was just clarifying.
Do we have a motion?
That's kind of a quagmire, because I understand your concern, but I also understand the fact that it's your property. And, hang on, let me finish what I have to say. I think, you know, it's your property. You should be able to do, within the law, within the zoning regulations, what you will with it. So for me, it's kind of a quagmire, because I understand what you're trying to do. And I understand your point too, sir, about children's safety, and, but there's only one way in and one way out, correct, to this particular area. Is that what you're saying, Mark? Now, I guess what I'm hearing, though, the underlying theme is who's gonna maintain the road, correct? Is that what I'm hearing from you and you? Is that what, is that?
Well, that's, that's what I hear from the residents. But I was willing to even go a step further. I said it at that meeting, the first one. I would be willing to write up a contract saying that I would maintain the road to what level it is now, and, once a year, I'll put rock on it, because I mean, you could ask, I mean, I could get my uncles to come up there, and they would tell you, and they could probably show you the days that they've put in on them roads since we bought it in the eighties.
Well, that's my, that's my point.
Oh, no, I maintain the road to the level it is now, absolutely.
But what I'm saying is, what I heard earlier is that, I agree with you and I agree with him, but you guys need to get together and have some type of contractual binding or contract between you.
Oh, yeah, I can have one wrote up.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I mean, it's kind of, that particular portion is out of our realm.
Yeah, yes, sir. And like he said, the fella, the other fella, the rezoning fella, I mean, you see all the property back there. It can, you can put trailers back there. So if I wanted to, if we wanted to, we could put a trailer park, so you're gonna have traffic anyway. And I'm not sure that it matters, but what I'm doing is not a live-in RV park. It's, I do Airbnbs. That's what I do for a living, and that's why my family's always been built, we've been building Onslow County for forty or fifty years now. Eastern Builders has been over here on Western Boulevard, and I'm just learning this new, the paperwork part, but I don't see much difference in the traffic, because typically, my place, I have one in Sneed's Ferry now, and it typically rents a hundred days. So you're talking about less traffic. In my eyes, there would be less traffic down there, because there wouldn't be somebody there two hundred and some days out of the year. It don't, my places don't rent that much, and I'm not planning on letting people come in and out with campers. I put my own campers there. I buy them. It's what I do. And as far as Tennessee, I don't live in Tennessee, sir. I have properties there. I bought properties to do the same thing in Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge, and I have, my daughters live up there, and I have some property there that I do go to. But I also have people here in family that take care of my rentals I have here, and so I have, there's no problem with people taking care of my things while I'm away, but I do travel back and forth to take care of everything. And I just, that's what I wanna do with it, and I don't see how it's gonna impact it no different. If you were to ride down that road, you could say for yourself that it's not really, it's not extremely expensive houses, trailers, some junk cars and stuff like that. So it's not necessarily something, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do wanna say one other thing, though. Is there a way, we have road maintenance agreements all over Onslow County. Is there a way to require him to provide a road maintenance agreement?
Not in a straight rezoning, so we can't place conditions in this case.
Okay, so we have to take him on his word.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more rezoning hearing. It is P R E Z dash twenty twenty-three seven, and this is the Brown rezoning, and I turn it over to Ben Warren.
All right, so this last rezoning application submitted by Gene and Lloyd Brown to rezone property from R eight M to R A. Mr. Gene and Lloyd Brown are also the property owners, and the parcel's identified as seven sixty-one dash thirty-three point one. It's located at eleven seventy-six South Parker Road and consists of approximately three point five eight acres. It's currently used for residential purposes and has access to Onwasso water and individual septic. It's located within the Turkey Creek Fire District, and the closest road with a traffic count is Tar Landing Road, which has an average annual daily traffic count of twenty-five hundred vehicle trips per day and a capacity of nine thousand three hundred. You see, it's a pretty large property with dual frontage, both off of South Parker Road and Gus Horn Road. And looking at the surrounding zoning, it falls within R A dam, but is directly adjacent to R A zoning. Comparing the two districts, that R A M has a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet, primarily for moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential, as well as manufactured housing. And the R A zoning district has that minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, primarily for rural residential pattern. The comprehensive plan designates this area as high-density residential, as you can see from the excerpt here from the land use plan. And considering the reasonableness of the request, it could be considered reasonable due to the fact that it is directly adjacent to existing R A zoning, and it is supported by several policies within the comprehensive plan. And it was considered by the Planning Board at the April sixth meeting, and at that time, the board made a unanimous recommendation for approval, and there were no citizens that spoke on this request. And that does conclude the staff report.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Ben. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Brown rezoning, P R E Z dash twenty twenty-three dash seven, and we have two citizens who have signed up, I believe, to speak, and the first is Jean Marie Brown of one one seven six South Parker Road. Okay, and we'll keep that in mind. So are you the applicant? Yes. And would Mr. Lloyd Brown want to speak? Okay, thank you so much. So our applicants are in the audience. If the commissioners need to ask them any questions, I'll make one general call to the audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the Brown rezoning specifically? Please approach the mic. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I turn it over to the commissioners for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving to our general items. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Our first item is for surplus land, and I will call Christina Russell up to the mic, our purchasing division head.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I have before you two new offers from a citizen for the surplus property. They are under parcel one six zero three five three and zero two eight six six eight. Both of these have the address of Sylvester Street. They both have an acreage of point two four, and both offers came in at four thousand seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. So the statute allows the county to sell the surplus property no longer, no longer serving as a public purpose and is uneconomical and inefficient. The county's standard policy is to use the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process. This process allows for interested parties to submit upset offers against each of those properties, and it's within an advertisement of ten days. If no upset bid offers are received within the ten-day period, the properties will be sold to the citizen. If the county receives any upset bids, the highest offer for each of those parcels will be brought back to you for consideration. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve Resolution number two three dash zero zero six and number two three dash zero zero seven, which authorizes myself, the purchasing division head, to conduct the sales of the property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolutions on behalf of the county.
And a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Chairman Foster and Commissioners, our next item is accepting mobile light towers from Duplin County, and I would like to call our emergency services deputy director Stacy Miles up to present this.
Commissioners, how are you all doing this morning? Here to talk to you about the possibility of receiving two mobile light towers from Duplin County, North Carolina. These were purchased several years ago through the domestic preparedness regions. These regions were created to help stimulate preparedness activities, excuse me, in all four areas of emergency management. They have a committee that oversees them, and the committee helps regulate the grant funding that comes through that region. So these mobile light towers, we utilize the one that we have currently for both small and large incidents, as well as for non-emergency incidents like the Freedom Festival at Onslow Pines Park. This will increase our capacity to two newer versions than the one we have, which is slowly aging out. Duplin County had purchased these, as I said, under the dipper, but they've purchased additional light towers and wanted to transfer these back to the state of North Carolina, who then offered them to Onslow County. There is no cost for us to take these light towers. We would only have to maintain them going forward, and they would stay a deployable resource with the state. If you have any questions, our request is that the board accept the mobile light towers and authorize the county manager to sign the MOU on behalf.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Okay, our next three items are with our finance officer, Mr. Andrew Prince, and that will be our project ordinance for Northwoods Middle School, a project ordinance for a new elementary school, and budget amendments. So Andrew, come on up.
On October third, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved the reimbursement resolution, Onslow County School Bonds, Northwoods Middle School, allowing the county to recover soft costs, including architecture, engineering, and legal costs associated with the design and expansion of the new elementary, or of the expansion of the middle school. With the approval of the Board of Commissioners, the proposed capital project ordinance for the Northwoods Middle School will be funded by the general obligation bond proceeds from the school's systems debt capacity model with a planned borrowing date of March or April of twenty twenty-four. The total project budget will be thirteen point two million and will consist of capital outlay, buildings, and professional design services. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the project ordinance for the Northwoods Middle School expansion and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you. On October third, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved the reimbursement resolution, Onslow County School Bonds, New Elementary School, allowing the county to recover soft costs associated with the design of the expansion. With the approval of the Board of Commissioners, the proposed capital project ordinance for the new elementary school will be funded by general obligation bond proceeds from the school system's debt capacity model with a planned borrowing date of June twenty twenty-three. The total project budget will be forty-four point eight five, eight four five million and will consist of capital outlay, buildings, and professional design services. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the project ordinance for the new Onslow County Elementary School and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
We have Budget Amendment fifty for your review. The budget amendment is to increase the expenditures to the crisis intervention program based upon some additional revenues that were received. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendment, Budget B fifty, for the total of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and nine dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Andrew, can you come back for just a second, just to clarify, is the budget amendment that's being passed B fifty-one or B fifty?
I misspoke. It is B fifty-one. That is my mistake.
Can we have another, I'm sorry, another motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to appointments.
Okay, and our final item are two appointments, and I will go over these with you. The first one is the Onslow County Motor Vehicle Board, which consists of three members who are available to address and revolve motor vehicle valuation appeals. This provides taxpayers that thirty days of appeal time when they get their combined reg- This provides taxpayers that 30 days of appeal time when they get their combined registration and tax notice to request an appeal. The initial review is conducted by our tax office staff, but if the taxpayer disagrees with what our staff in the tax office tells them, they are then referred to the Motor Vehicle Valuation Board as the second level of their appeal, and the decisions made by this board can be appealed to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. The current term for Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board expires on May 2nd, so it expires tomorrow. Mr. Gary Lankis, Mr. George Bill Hitch, and Mr. Robbie Yates have all expressed a desire to continue serving on the board through the next term. Their applications are on file and have been certified by the clerk's office. I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Gary Lankis, Mr. George Hitch, and Mr. Robbie Yates to the Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board for the next term, which will end May 2, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. Our next appointment is for the Local Emergency Planning Committee. The goals of the Local Emergency Planning Committee are to coordinate hazardous material planning, preparedness response, and mitigation issues at our local level. Membership attempts to be reflective of many agencies, not limited to state, emergency management, law enforcement, first responders, emergency management, health, communications, and emergency medical services. The Health Department representative currently needs to be replaced, and Dominique Van Pelt with the Onslow County Health Department has requested to serve as the agency representative to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Her application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. We ask that you please appoint Dominique Van Pelt in the Health Department category for two years, with the term expiring January 1, 2025.
Motion, motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, that does it for that, and I guess it's time for my manager's comments?
It is.
All right. First of all, I would like to say we do hope that citizens have the opportunity to speak before the board and that we do sign up for our public comment period prior to every commissioner's meeting, and that has to be done under our board procedures by the time that the doors shut and the meeting starts. So those forms are located at the back, and we do welcome citizens to speak on anything upon which the board has any control. And so that signup sheet is at the back of the room, and we do ask that you do that prior to the meetings, and the board meets every first and third Monday. As far as other comments, I did want to let the board and the public know that this is the week that we prepare for hurricanes, and I'm not putting that word out there to be a Debbie Downer or anything, but we have to make sure we're ready. Today, we're having shelter walkthroughs and training, and we're going to our area elementary and middle schools and high schools that serve as shelters and making sure that staff are prepared and that everything is ready out at the potential shelter sites. On tomorrow, we will have EOC exercise and training of our internal staff. On Wednesday, we'll have web EOC virtual training for any staff that are new to using our electronic system. And Thursday, we have damage assessment training, and that's when staff from North Carolina Emergency Management comes and provides a two-hour refresher for damage assessment. When we have a great big storm like we did with Hurricane Florence, our county has 72 hours to pull together a rough estimate of the damage, and that is part of what helps determine whether or not we'd get an emergency declaration so we can get FEMA reimbursement. It's a very important part of how we respond to storms. We will also be training on the software that is utilized to make sure we get accurate numbers on that, and we have representatives from Holly Ridge, Jacksonville, North Toppsil Beach, Richlands, and Swansboro who will be coming to that training. We do stress that citizens begin to think about reviewing your insurance policies, pull together your supply kits, your emergency numbers, documents that you might need, medicines, food, water, and alternate power sources, and also make sure that you're thinking through your plans for pets or for maybe elderly relatives or folks with disabilities in your family that might need some special arrangements if we were to have some severe weather. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Scott.
Well, okay, you started me last time. Okay. Today, we discussed a couple things about the foster parenting and parenting. In Onslow County, we need more now the foster parents, and I'm asking anyone that is interested in that to please contact the Health Department. And I'm also asking the county manager to make sure that we have a spot on our website that will assist them in recruiting the foster parents. It's extremely important. It's a dire need, and that's something that I know that this board will totally support. And I thank you for everything you're doing there, Ms. Sanders. It means, and that means a lot to be able to place a child in a safe environment if that need arises, and I thank you and your staff for doing that. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Price.
I'd also like to thank our foster parents, as we recognize their service to others. It takes a heart for that. For that, it's not work, I mean, it's a labor of love, basically, so we appreciate you and all that you do. I enjoyed joining the Jacksonville Board of Realtors, a community discussion of events that Onslow County faced, challenges we face, and discussion that we had a week or so ago. So I appreciate them sending out invitations. A reminder that Saturday at the Onslow County Museum, we have, the Smithsonian Institute has honored Onslow County by choosing them as the county to have change in rural America crossroads. So that's huge, that's big, because we're going to highlight Onslow County as a county and where we see that happening, and we want to have a balance in Onslow County of remembering the role that rural America has played in our development, definitely in Onslow County, and also the traditions and values that you see that come out of those communities in rural America, so I value that. Other than that, have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
I was expecting that.
Ms. Penner?
Yeah. I don't think that probably enough appreciation can be shared for the foster family volunteers. The Waltons, who, Mr. Walton actually spoke today, I witnessed in action when I went to the fair this past summer, and it was amazing because Mrs. Walton sat there juggling a baby on one hip and still handing out brochures to recruit new parents that might be interested in being in the foster program. So I really do shout out to all of you who are willing to do that. It is a labor of love. Thank you so much. Last week, you know, what a surprise, we are kind of in a military dominant area here, but I went to three different events that were military-flavored. Let's say we had a great spring mixer at the Marston Pavilion with some other local officials and business owners that were there, other community-involved people, community service-involved people. And then Friday, went to the semifinalists presentation for Military Child of the Year, and I think all of you should be very proud to know that out of 39 semifinalists across the country, 10 of them were actually in North Carolina and in the vicinity here. These ladies and gentlemen are scholastically strong, as well as leading the charge in volunteering, and that's encouraging to me because I've always been brought up that volunteering is what makes the world tick, and the hours that they racked up to probably just, probably helped them in their, in being a semifinalist, but also just in who they are and the way that they were raised was just very encouraging. And then on Saturday, we had our Vietnam Veterans Memorial Celebration, which was always touching and very, very solemn, but just want to keep the, I guess, the word out there again that we still do have, you know, MIA and KIA people that are overseas, and it's something to keep in mind there, just to wrap up the whole volunteering theme that I have. I met a 92-year-old, one of our older Americans of the area here, who is still driving and still out there volunteering. She was wearing a shirt from a local agency here, and that was just so encouraging and wonderful. So anyway, I hope you all have a wonderful week, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot, I want to thank everybody for being here, but I want our prayers to go out to Norman Bryson. He's our EOC director, and he's been hospitalized, and I want our prayers to go out to him. He does a lot for this community, and he's one of our great directors that I think the world of, and I hope and pray that he comes back safe and sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address Mr. Irving. We appreciate your comments, even though we don't have any direct control over roads. Commissioner Buchanan and I both serve on the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Our road planning goes out years in advance, but we know now that there's an issue that we need to address, so we appreciate that. And as far as these difficult rezoning issues, a note from Mr. Ingram that we rezoned that property to a lower density, so actually the number of possible units that could go into that property is lower now than it was. I hope that Mr. Thompson will honor his commitment to maintain the road. We got a lot of problems with unmaintained roads in Onslow County. I wish there was a solution for it, but I, after many years of trying to find it, I haven't found it yet, so I guess we'll keep looking. But appreciate everybody being here. I hope you have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Vice Chairman Knapp?
I don't really have much to say, but shout out to DSS and what you guys do with foster care that's very, very important. It's a big need, and I think I've met a couple of people who are partaking in foster care, and my hat's off to them. That's a big responsibility, and they're willing to take it, even with five or six kids. And I think it's just a really neat thing to do. It's something that more people should be involved in to help our kids here in Onslow County. The only other thing I wanted to say basically is that please pray for Norman. Paul Buchanan hit it nail on the head. He took the words out of my mouth. Norman's a great guy. He's our EOC director. I was shocked and surprised to hear what had happened to him yesterday. If you're a praying person, please pray for Norman, that he gets through this, that he gets back to us healthy, and that he comes back to us as our director, because he's, not only is he a heck of a director, he's a heck of a person as well. And just, they think about him and pray for him, and I appreciate it. And the last thing I'm going to shout out to, because he's not here, it's my dad's birthday yesterday, he would have been 91, so I'm sure he's sitting in heaven watching me. Just want to say happy birthday, Dad. It's been a long time, and I miss you. But other than that, have a great week, and I'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you. Oh, by the way, thank you, Rick, for coming out, per usual, from North Toppsil Beach. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I think Commissioner Bennett mentioned Mr. Irving about Heinz Farm, the road. Yes, that's exactly what I was going to mention, is that that may be something that we can check in with Onwassa with the fire hydrants and the situation out there. We appreciate you coming. I see, I think I'm looking out there and seeing a lot of folks out there from the neighborhood there in Heinz Farm, so shout out to those Southwest grads.
Please don't talk about your senior service.
I'm not, I'm not. I won't talk about my senior games, but we appreciate you coming out today and sharing that with us, and we may have to get on the horn with some of our representatives to get DOT out there to see what the conditions are, to see if we can get it on the rehab chart of getting taken care of. Also, foster parenting, I know lots of families that are foster parents, and they do, it's tremendous for our community, number-one resource are our kids, and we've got to continue to work and take care of our kids and make sure we have them here for the future. Older Americans, I'm slowly getting older and older every day, and I celebrate that, but we appreciate all the wisdom and experience that the older Americans bring here. I'm not mentioning it to Commissioner Buchanan or anything, but we appreciate his experience. And as Commissioner Carpenter was speaking, we had quite a few events the last couple of weeks, but also congratulations to Heather Norris, the clerk over at Onwassa, for being the Administrative Professionals of the Year recognition there. So congratulations to her, a fine lady that does a lot of work, and we appreciate what she does over there. And then, as Commissioner Carpenter mentioned, we were over at the Vietnam Recognition Ceremony Saturday morning. It was a beautiful day to celebrate the sacrifice of so many for the continued, the freedoms that we have. We didn't get them cheap, they didn't come free, it come at the expense of a lot of people, not only those that served and lost their lives, but those that are still here without their family members. And they had, our guest speaker that morning was someone that was eight years old whenever the military representative showed up to the house. I think it was 1973. So those are things that people, I can't imagine what that is like, but every one of us sitting here today are living because of the sacrifice of those that come before us, and we appreciate all of that. With that being said, we need a motion to adjourn.
A move.
We have a motion to adjourn, and it's seconded, and we are adjourned. Have a great day.